Okay, I am going to call to order the special meeting of Stevens Point Area School District School Board, Monday, September 8th at 6:00 PM. Roll call, verification of a quorum, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Erler?
Here.
Ms. Paxton?
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Excused.
Mr. Presley?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Sherrick?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
We do have a quorum, eight members present.
Okay, the next thing is we need to approve the agenda, please. The agenda is very simple, it's information and possible action regarding transportation services.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Paxton?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight to zero.
Okay, thank you for coming very much, everyone. As we all know, there have been significant issues with transportation beginning of this school year. The public has understandably been concerned, would like assurance that this is being handled appropriately and measures are being taken so that it's not going to happen again. We are meeting tonight in open session to discuss exactly what it is that we as the board would like brought back to us. So this is more an information seeking from board members of what you're interested in hearing. No employees' names, no employees either by name or by job description can be mentioned or we need to go into closed session, that's what that is. In terms of their performance, anything like that, I think you all understand. We aren't here to accuse or even speculate, but rather we're here to come up with conclusive questions we'd like answered and to give direction to our administration. I will stop anyone who becomes confrontational or accusatory. I'd like to publicly apologize to our community for the frustration this has caused and thank our entire Transportation Department for working so many long hours to do everything possible to remedy the situation. With that, I'd like to open this up to the board. We're gonna talk, I am gonna cut this off at 6:30 out of respect for the meeting afterwards. If we want to have another meeting later this week, I'm all ears, but for now, if we could just cover the questions we have, decide what kinds of things we'd like to hear, and then at the end I'll let the superintendent speak. Yep.
Well, I'd like to, as far as the investigation goes, I'd like to know when the dry run was performed, what issues were, came out of that, and how they were addressed.
Jeff?
A couple, I'm really looking for some timelines. The number one, obviously deals with the software, what were the promises of the software, when it was installed, when was it tested, what were the results of those tests, who was involved in that testing, kind of the who, what, when, where, as far as the software goes, when we realized that there were issues with the software, did we contact the company, what support did they give us or not give us? That's one timeline that I'd like to see. The second one is how the administration had handled the situation as far as the timeline. When were they first noticed of the problem, who was notified, who was on vacation during the time, who was not on vacation, what individuals had, what responsibilities in dealing with the situation? And give the timeline as far as that goes for what our administration did as far as dealing with the situation. Probably more important than those two is reassurances to the community and this board that the problem has been rectified and that we're not going to see anything in the foreseeable future. The last thing, as far as the timeline, October 1st does not work for me. As a board member, I'd like to see that we have this information by our next board meeting. Should not take long to gather that information. I think we also need a recommendation from the administration as a response to the situation, again, on our next regular board meeting, which is next week. So things need to happen now and not later.
Well.
Yep. Chris? I guess, I guess what I was, I didn't realize we were gonna do it, asking questions. I guess I wanted to hear exactly what happened from beginning till now, and then I would have questions, so I guess I was waiting to hear from the administration and, because I had some questions, but I'm not sure if I'm able to ask them without understanding what the process was. I know that I spoke to someone, and I think I would rather have all of the information and to say we need it at the next board meeting, I'm not sure that I'll get, that the administration will have all the information to present to us that would be complete, and I would like a complete from beginning till current till future, and if that takes October 1st, this is the beginning of the school year, I mean, they're running, you know, the district right now, I'd like to have enough time for the administration to give us a complete answer from beginning to end. So I don't think October 1st is unfair. Obviously, we want, we want to make sure that from beginning to end, we have all the information, but, but asking, having the board members ask a lot of information in the beginning, for me, is not what I was hoping to hear. I was hoping to hear beginning to end as to what happened in the beginning, in the middle, right now, and then move on from there with questions, so I'll just wait.
Yep. Trish?
I can say over the course of the past week or so, I've talked to, sorry, I'll use my microphone. I can say over the past week or so, I've spoken to a number of parents, and I've also spoken to Dr. Wedinger several times and been given updates, but, but they've only been given to me, and I've shared what I could with parents. I guess my understanding of tonight would be that we would hear from the administration what they could, can share with us at this point, and then details of a full investigation later. As long as the school is, as long as the district buses are running correctly today and tomorrow, I think that it doesn't matter if we have it, if we have that information at the next board meeting or the meeting thereafter. Right now, I think that we need to give the administration an opportunity to share some information with citizens.
Okay, let me finish. Kim, do you have any?
Nothing really new, other than I think that if you were a parent that had a child that was not comfortable, that, yeah, there are so many different, I wanted it yesterday. I want the information yesterday. So they know where they were, they know where they went, and they, we hope, you know, they can always bring their new future coming, I would like to see it as soon as possible, if not by the end of the week.
So, Meg?
First of all, I want to, again, thank the transportation employees who gave up their Labor Day weekend, many of them working many, many hours to get things pulled together as best they could. I'm the mom of four kids, I'm 56 years old, and I've learned in life that, that we often learn more and progress better from our mistakes. And there appear to have been a series of errors, but I believe that they are broader than one week would allow for administration to be able to fully examine, because for me, I'm very concerned about what happened, but I'm even more concerned about the steps that are going to be taken moving forward to deal with issues within transportation, as well as to deal with, it sounds like, both some software, but also just some questions about what data was requested and how that data was requested, and how we as a district, frankly, district-wide are determining those types of queries. I wanted to just read something, it was in the paper the other day, and I'm paraphrasing it, so, but it was out of the Spogen newspaper. "Our leaders should be held responsible for their actions and policies, but the flames of public opinion often burn far too hot when their feet are held to the fire. The link between cause and effect in the heated issues of our time is far more complex than what follows from the actions of a single individual. Things start at the top, it is true, but don't always end there. Otherwise, we might be tempted to grant too much power to any one individual, the very thing our representative democracy is designed to avoid. So we shouldn't be too quick to blame. The situation," and here I'm paraphrasing because I believe our situation, "involves circumstances no single individual can nor should control." And so for me, I feel it's most important for our administration and we as a board to take the time, the deliberate time that we need, to really get a full picture of this and get a report back from the technology standpoint, from the transportation standpoint, how we as a district are gonna move forward over the next year to ensure all systems are perfect and go when we begin the opening of next year. I'm aware that there are issues with the transport, with the bus, the first day of school every year, because it's such a huge job, and there's so many kids out there on all of those routes. Whatever we can do to ensure smooth operation of that for every family moving forward is, I guess, what I'm interested in. Thank you.
Mr. Ebel?
I'm perfectly willing to give the administration the time that they feel they need to give a thorough, complete report, and if it's October 1st, if that's what you can live with, I can live with that.
Yep.
I actually, I'm married to a former bus driver, I understand the whole drive run, what the purpose of that is. I've spoken to transportation people in this community, the purpose is to find out what the problems are then and there. For it to take until October 1st to come an answer back to the board, I'm a Kim, I should have had an answer yesterday. I feel as a board member that I should have been kept up to date, that I should have answers to give these people, whether or not the system is up and running now or not. I think we're, some of us are thinking that we have to come up with a solution so this never happens again and all of that. That isn't what I'm looking for. What I want to know is what happened, what the whole situation is, and where we stand today. I want to make sure that everything's running well. I, I see no reason why we shouldn't be able to have our investigation done by next Monday. There's no reason for it.
Anyone else have something before I let Attila speak? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. As I indicated in my September 1st letter to our parents and students, I want to express our apology for not provising, providing the bus information that you needed in advance and in a timely manner, for raising your concern and anxiety about the routes and the safety of yours and our students, and for not communicating with you sooner about the situation. As parents, taxpayers, and our partners, you expected more, deserved more, and should have received more from us. We let you down, and that's not acceptable. As superintendent, I've taken and continue to take full responsibility for the routing and scheduling issues that we experienced, as well as to ensure that our system works and works well moving forward. As I also stated in my September 1st letter to parents and the community, we are reviewing what occurred during the conversion process, as well as taking an overall review of the process of routing, scheduling, individual and group stops, shuttling of students, transfers, parent requests, open seating, timelines, and ways in which we communicate with parents. That review will be completed October 1 and provided to the board, and then certainly we can have it, I would recommend that we have it on the agenda at the October board meeting for further questions by the board. The following is what we know occurred regarding the conversion process and the problems that occurred as a result of that. This obviously is not going to be complete, I've not had a chance to personally interview or talk with the office staff at Transportation in depth. I have been over there on a daily basis talking with them about the issues, but in sitting down and looking at the whole situation, I've not had an opportunity to do that. I can tell you that as late as about an hour ago, our Transportation Department was sitting down and restructuring what did occur and what and why. The conversion was from a semi-automated, semi-manual process, which used the Edulog system to our new system called Lynx, L-Y-N-X. The conversion began in April and proceeded through the summer. Summer school was used as a pilot run, and the routing and scheduling worked well with that, based on the individual students who registered. Preparations for the regular school year began during the summer school time period, and that was almost exclusively at that time done by the software company. Towards the end of summer school and immediately afterwards, we began working to route and schedule students and drivers for the regular year, that is, both the software company and our own staff were involved. Drivers were provided their routes, students, and pickup and drop-off points and times in approximately Wednesday, August 20. They were to run those by Friday afternoon, August 22. As drivers ran the routes on either that Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, they returned telling the Transportation Office personnel that there were problems, because many students on the lists were no longer in the district, had moved, et cetera. As the office staff looked into the reports as the drivers returned, they discovered that approximately 1,200 inactive students were included on those lists, students who no longer were with the district, who had graduated, had left, et cetera. The district operates a fleet of 80 buses, both large and small, has approximately 85 routes, including regular and special needs student routes, 4K routes, and private and parochial routes, and buses approximately 4,700 students daily. The 1,200 inactive students were in addition to those. However, the new system was purchased and implemented in order to provide greater efficiencies with routing. As a result, it is likely, though I don't know this yet for sure, that the larger-than-normal number was not recognized at the time because efficiencies were being created as a result of using the Lynx system. I was informed on Friday, August 22, that there was a problem with the routing and scheduling, and that it contained inactive students. Initially, we were going to return to the previous system of scheduling. However, we made the decision not to do that, since so much time had been spent on the conversion, and while it was going to be personnel and time-intensive, we stayed on course believing that we would have enough time to notify parents and to get the routes scheduled. Our Transportation Office staff worked through the August 22 through 24 weekend and continued through the next week removing inactive students and rerouting and rescheduling the routes and students. We were in daily contact with Transportation and employed two to three temporary staff to answer phones so that the office staff could do the routing and scheduling uninterrupted. In addition, a retired office staff member was brought in to assist with routing and scheduling, a software program from Lynx flew in from Arizona to assist as well. The Transportation Department was in constant contact with the Lynx programmers and owner regarding the situation, and they provided service throughout this time period. On Wednesday, August 27, the department thought that they would make it in time to send out letters and cards to all elementary parents about the routes and schedules on Friday so that parents would have them in their hands on Saturday. In addition, secondary parents would be called over the weekend personally by office staff to inform them of their routes and schedules, and both those events took place. On Friday, August 29, in speaking with the department, we determined that we needed to inform parents more than through the cards and letters and phone calls. We then posted the addresses of students, but not names, and the pickup spots on our website for parents and notified them of same. We checked with two legal counsels about the liability of posting those addresses and were notified that we had none. In addition, we checked with law enforcement, who also stated that they did not view it as a great concern, but as we did, certainly understand parent concerns. Those lists were removed late morning, Tuesday, September 2nd, first day of school for that reason. In addition to that, there were no reported incidents by the police, by any parent, by any bus driver regarding those lists having been posted in terms of anything that might occur in the community. I wrote the September 1 letter over that weekend and sent it out to parents through my assistant over the Labor Day weekend. In addition to that, what I'd like to do is publicly thank the Transportation Department for ensuring that a vast majority of our 4,700 bus students were picked up, brought to school, dropped off back home in a timely and safe manner, a vast majority. I also want to acknowledge that our staff and drivers made that happen. They worked virtually around the clock, from August 22 through September 1, many of them staying past midnight on many of those days, including the Labor Day weekend, and the first week of school. They gave up two weekends, one of which was the long Labor Day weekend, to ensure the safety in pickups and drop-offs of a majority of our students. In addition, I'd like to thank the Stevens Point and Plover Police Departments and the County Sheriff's Office for their assistance during the first week of school. They usually have a greater presence during the first week of school, and this year we made them aware of our situation so that if they needed, if needed, they could be of assistance, and they certainly were. We had a significantly higher-than-usual set of errors than in past years, and we acknowledge that. Usually at the beginning of the year, we have transfers that occurred during the summer, we have requests from parents for changes, we have an open seating policy, we have shuttle buses that drop kids off at Spash and then pick them up and take them to their ultimate location, and we're currently dealing with those changes, transfers, and open seating requests now. The third Friday count, which is a statewide count of students that we have in the district, also is a target point for us in terms of some of the changes that may occur in busing. That is, we believe that by that point, things have settled down, will have settled down significantly. As we sit here today, the buses are operating rather smoothly, we still have some changes in open seating, as I mentioned, that are occurring, but for the most part, it's occurring as it should. The first week of school is generally one in which these things get, that get solved, but because of the conversion process and the situation with the inactive student files, the, the rate of error and routes and schedules having problems were certainly elevated. We also could have communicated with parents quicker, sooner, in a more timely fashion. In addition, technology, our own technology staff was not involved in the conversion process, and we've put into place an assurance that that won't happen again in any conversion. And finally, as part of the overall review, it's quite likely that we'll engage the services of a consultant to take a look at our system, that is, our overall transportation system and how we route, schedule, and how we handle parent calls, changes, requests, transfers that often occur in that two-week time period before school as well as after school. So that is what we know today, and the review that, that we're beginning to do and a little bit of what we've done, as you've just heard, is going to encompass more, and by October 1, I'll have a complete report for the board.
Thank you. All right, we have about six minutes left. Do you have specific questions you'd like to ask, or shall we just figure out what we want covered and by when, if we'd like to meet again? Give me your thoughts, please.
I think I'd like a full report on October 1. One of the things that I thought about, because during my tenure as a board member and having a number of different administrators be in, and superintendents especially, who come in, and I could talk about specifics, which I really don't want to, but I know that in specific departments, there would, an error would come up, and the discussion would be, how long has this been going on? If you don't find the error, and Meg, I think you kind of, you know, said that, you know, if you find an error, you don't always know what else is behind that error, and how long has that error been going on, and is this normal, and is this what we normally do, but is it what we should be doing? So that's why I'm saying sometimes when, when something comes up, you look at it and you say, okay, and I guess we could get a quick answer, but I think I'd rather find out exactly what happened, and is there anything else behind the scenes that showed up that maybe was, hasn't been addressed or needs to be addressed? So October 1 is fine for me.
Trish?
I guess I'd like to know if today, being the first day of the second week, if there were calls and continuing problems, or if today was pretty smooth.
I wouldn't have a real complete handle on that, Trish, I do have some handle. The call, I received one call today from a parent who just moved into the district from Wausau. She was simply looking for the time that her son was to be picked up and brought to school and then dropped off again. So the, she had been driving her son to school for two days last week because they had just moved into the district and there had been a death in the family, so she hadn't been able to get the student in the first day. That's the call that I received. I know that the Transportation Department is dealing with changes that keep coming in, parents keep calling with changes, and open seating in cases in which, and this is a practice that is a longstanding practice in the district, which is that people who, students who live less than one mile from the school, radius from the school, may be provided transportation if there is an open seat. Well, we won't know that until literally the dust settles, when we find out exactly who's still coming to the district, who isn't. We have a fairly, I wouldn't say fairly large, but a number of migrant students who come into the district at times later than the school begins, or right when it begins and then leave, and so there's some adjustments there. I don't know how many calls Transportation received, for example, today, but I, I know that we've kept on an additional temporary staff, one temporary staff member through Wednesday to, to handle any, any, any kinds of those. I have not been informed of any unusual circumstances today, but I will tell you that my experience over the past, this is the fifth year, that the first week of school is always fraught with changes and transfer requests and, and issues related to busing, always. And then by the second week of school, it, it just kind of dissipates and, and things are handled. This year, we had a significantly larger number. It's attributable to the conversion process, it's not attributable to a system failure, and, you know, I can assure parents that as we move along, every day is a day that every single kid gets to school on time, gets picked up, and so on. We had some unusual circumstances occur in our after-school busing as well, because routes were not, routes didn't have the right information on them, you know, things, things happen, but, and it's unfortunate, and it's also responsibility of ours to make sure that they don't happen. But generally speaking, after the first week of school, things are almost back to normal. We had a, and I just want to repeat this, that we had a significantly larger number of issues related to routing and scheduling than we normally do, and we should have done better. But I will also say that a vast majority of our 4,700 students were picked up, dropped off, and picked up again and dropped off at home in a, in a timely and efficient manner.
Jeff?
Well, I can appreciate that the administration wants, to October 1st, to do this. As a compromise, I'm willing to do it to the second rigor-scheduled meeting to give them additional time, but the reason being is phrases like, I don't have a handle on this, and I, we don't know the answers, I want this at the forefront. This is an important issue to get our children to school. My children are affected by this, and therefore, it should be on the front burner of every administrator in this district to ensure that our students are there, timely, the right place, the right time. And so for that, I'd like to see the board receive the information sooner than later. If we wait till the second meeting in October, that's a month and a half that has gone by that we're sitting as a board wondering what's going on. To me, this is an important issue that the board was not brought up to speed with, that needs to be brought up to speed with. So I would request that the rest of the board, and I'll make a motion right now, that the report be available for the second rigor-scheduled board meeting in September.
Do you have the date, Chris?
I think it's the 20th. I think it's the 29th of September.
So it's only a couple of days early.
I'll second that.
First of all, I would agree that the board, when I found out about the problem on Friday, August 22, I should have immediately notified the board, and that's on me. But what I just read to the board is basically the crux of the matter. There probably are some other details behind that involving personnel and some other procedures, but the board now does know what basically occurred. And again, there's a more complete report that we're going to do. In order to do that, we're also running the school district, and yes, it is on my front burner, as it is on a couple of other people's. But I indicated in my letter, October 1, for a reason. I'm going to need that time to do this and do it right. I think a couple of board members have indicated that. And as we sit here today, as I said, the buses are operating normally, and I think any sooner than October 1 would not provide the board with at least the time that I can devote to it.
Yes.
So if you're saying October 1, when is the actual date that the board will get it? Because we don't have a meeting.
October 1.
Oh, we don't have a meeting.
October 1. You'll get the report October 1, as will the whole community. We'll put it on the website, and then I said earlier that I would recommend that it be on the October Board meeting agenda to discuss.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. What we can do, Jeff and I, Amy and Attila, are the four that set the agenda. We can put it on the agenda for the 29th and see where we are. If we need to have a special meeting that week, I am okay with that, and I don't mind calling it. Chris?
I think if the administration has a plan and a process that's already in place, and they're asking for October 1, and as Jeff said, it's only a couple of days, I'd like to amend the motion to change the date to October 1.
Can you please tell me what day of the week October 1 is?
Oh, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Thank you. Okay.
So you've made a motion.
We need a second on her amendment.
I will second her motion to amend.
Okay, so the first vote we need to do is on the amendment. So what you are voting on right now is October 1 as an amended date to have, and I'm happy to know right now that you'd like a meeting that day, and we can have it that day.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
No.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to three to amend the motion.
Okay, then we need to vote on the original motion. Can you read it, please?
One. We're voting on the amended, the new amended motion.
Correct.
To have the final report available unto the board by October 1, 2014, or on October 1, 2014.
Is that going to come with the wording that we're having a meeting, a special session that day right away, or we're just getting the information? That's two different things.
What do you prefer?
The motion was for just the information. If you wanted to have a meeting, that'd be a second motion after that.
Well, you don't have to do it. You can just tell me that's what you want, and I'll set it up. It's if you want it in the motion, that's fine. Yep.
One option, and I don't know if it's going to happen, but there may be recommendations coming out of there that then will be appropriate to go through committee and to come to board. I don't know that for sure, but if that was an option, then you could work with the superintendent to notice them for the appropriate committee meetings that following week. If I'm, am I correct in terms of it?
No, you're right.
And then it would come up through those committee to board. I don't know if that's the case, but it would give us the option for that and the ability to focus on those specific issues that are appropriate for committee.
I appreciate that, Meg. I don't foresee recommendations coming forward for the board to act on. There will certainly be, I think, procedural and process changes that we're going to implement. You know, this is a matter of a process that occurs in many school districts, companies, whenever you convert software, and things that happened as a result of that. I don't see recommendations coming to the board as a result of this as much as a report about what it is that we're going to do, most importantly, to ensure that, number one, our current system is working as it should, number two, that next year, this is, the routing and scheduling and communication, so on, the busing of students is going to be done well in advance, and parents notified well in advance, and number three, is that we're going to ensure that no conversion of software takes place without our technology department being involved. And again, I don't see it coming forward, recommendations, but I think the committee structure would be a good place for it to come through, but the board will have the report in their hands by October 1.
It may be a matter where it would be appropriate to report in full oral with respect to the recommendations.
Absolutely.
Okay, we need to wrap this up out of respect for our committees. Can we please do a roll call vote? This is the amended motion.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
So this is to wait until the meeting on October 1, or, I apologize, just to let them have until October 1? Yes, I don't care. Yes, don't make a difference.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxen?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to one.
Okay, what I will do on October 1, I'm going to call an open and closed session. If we don't need them, we don't need them, but I am going to do it. That's a Wednesday. We'll read over the report and look at it and see if there's anything else the board needs to be involved in or not. Okay? Go ahead.
Will that be at 6:00 or at 6:30?
We need to do everything from this point on at 6:30.
Thank you.
Yep.
If, can I just ask a question? If upon reading the report, it doesn't appear to be necessary to have that meeting on the 1st, can we move it back? I guess my feeling is, is that we need a little time to get the report and digest it, and maybe even talk to parents about it, and it just strikes me as a little premature to be setting a special session that evening when we might, you know, I mean, many of us work during the day. I won't have an opportunity to read it. If I get it at 10:00 in the morning, if it's in my Dropbox, I won't get a chance to read it. I mean, I'll skim it, but I won't be reading it. And I just think that a meeting is premature, and I think when we're talking about changing protocol within the district, I really think that haste makes waste, and we're moving very fast. The bottom line is if the children are safe and being picked up and dropped off correctly today and tomorrow and this week, what's the rush? Let's do it right. Let's digest the report. Let's give ourselves a couple of days to think it through and talk about it and so forth.
I'll tell you what, I will send out an email, and people can let Amy know in response when they think it would be appropriate to get together. I won't, I don't have to make that determination now. We need a 24-hour notice on it, so yeah, Kim.
Well, and I can understand what Trish is saying, you know, because if we don't get it, we don't, you know, if we get home at 5:00 o'clock. But I would like something before Friday Night Football, because Friday night, when I was sitting at that football game, when all this stuff was going on, I looked like that I didn't know what was going on, and exactly, I didn't know what was going on. Saturday morning, I found out what was going on when I ran into administration at the grocery store. I wish I would have known Friday exactly what you told everybody. I could have said, hey, go to the website, this is what's happening, but to sit there at a football game when you've got thousands of parents. So I would like to know, let's give us the night to look at it. I don't want to say I don't care what the parents think. I want to know what's happened. I want to be able to go and say to the parents, this is what happened, this is what we're doing, and I do agree, we need an open session and we need a closed session, because if we need to take care of something, we need to take care of it that night with our personnel.
Okay, so Thursday sounds better, but what I'll do is send out an email to get feedback from everybody on when you'd like to meet after we read the report.
I would ask that you give us options, because I'm not sure we need to.
Absolutely.
You know, right after we read this and that. I'd like a little time, too, and I totally agree with Trish. If there was, you know, an urgency, I would say, let's do this right away. This is a report, a whole report that's going to give us a lot of information, so I hope we'll have options for when we can meet.
All right, before we adjourn, I just want to take one more opportunity to apologize to our community. This has been a frustrating situation. I thank everybody for how well it has been handled, and I, more than anything, want to thank our Transportation Department. You guys have been stellar and above and beyond, and how many hours people have put in, thank you. Thank you for making things go as smoothly as possible in rough circumstances. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll move.
Second. Roll call vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.